All right, we'd like to welcome Mayor Ryan for the regular town council meeting on June 11th, 2018 at 7:00. Unfortunately, we had to wait five minutes because Mr. Tewolk had to leave his brother who is a family like to come and make sure we could actually have this meeting because we didn't have enough council members to have a forum. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. All right, let's go with the pleasurable leaders led by Councilman Seawall.
Our pleasurable leaders, these are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Berry, roll call, please.
Councilman Conley.
Here.
Councilman Kloski.
Yes.
Councilman Neta.
Here.
Councilman Morrison and Jackson. Councilman Seawall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seawall.
Here.
And Mayor Farr.
Thank you. Here. Approval of regular council meeting minutes of May 29th, 2018. Have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would approve the regular council meeting minutes of May 29th, 2018.
This present. Second. We have a motion, seconded in discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Berry.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Neta.
Yes.
Councilman Seawall.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Seawall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to receive the petitions or correspondence from the public, I would like to have our town attorney to summarize the bond issues for the hospital. Doug, would you please give us a summary, please?
Yes, sir. The bond issued that is being considered by town council tonight are not bonds being issued by the town, nor will it result in debt of the town, nor will it ever result in any liability to the taxpayers of the town. It is a bond issued solely of the Economic Development Authority, which is a completely separate legal entity from the town, for which the town and its taxpayers will have no liability. The bonds represent a loan from a commercial bank through the EDA to Warren Memorial Hospital, a Virginia non-stock, nonprofit corporation organized under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. The Internal Revenue Code provides that governmental units having jurisdiction over the physical area in which any facility financed with the proceeds of private activity bonds is located, in this case, the town and the county, must approve the issuance of such bonds. The reason the Internal Revenue Code requires town and county approval is to indicate that the hospital, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, is not borrowing money for a reason that does not allow nonprofit organizations. Financing a hospital is an appropriate nonprofit 501(c)(3) purpose. The issuance of the bonds as requested by the hospital will not constitute a debt of the town or the county, and neither the faith and credit nor the taxing power of the town or county will be pledged to the payment of the bonds or the interest or any other cost incident thereto. The town and the county and the taxpayers will never be obligated to pay the bonds or the interest or any other costs thereto, no matter what happens in the future. That means that for some reason there was a default on the payment of the bonds, no taxpayers will ever be obligated to pay for that. That's my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other council member have any summaries they want to give us before this? Hearing none. Doing number five, receipt of petitions or correspondence from the public. Ms. Berry.
We have North Warren Volunteer Fire Department. I believe that's Mr. Neal.
Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please hold it to three minutes. Thank you.
I'll try. Jason Neal. It's a 415 Warren Avenue, Department 2. Currently, I'm the president of the company that was North Warren Volunteer Fire Department. Just two things. First thing is, this Saturday is our breakfast with you every Thursday of the month. I'm here tonight to invite you guys, your families, you know, to come out to our monthly breakfast if you want to come out and eat. Then I'll, we'll cover the calls, you know, tell you guys come out and enjoy nights wherever. It's the breakfast start goes from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 in the morning. We got pancakes, sausage, eggs, gravy, just hopeless stuff that I run and I go to because they'll take more than.
Keep on taking a few extra minutes and keep describing.
And number two is, I gave Ms. Berry a flyer for our open house on June 30th. We are planning on doing some demos from the fire side of the thing, and also, there's a couple of guys from the police department, the sheriff's department. We have Steve and Gray's, and we have Eric, Eric Galan, also as well. You know, for the kids, it's free hot dogs, it's free CNC ice cream, it's basically everything is free that day because we want to give back to those that have given to us over the years. So, then I also had a former invite that I haven't started giving to you guys, he's my treasurer of the fire department. We are hoping to see at least one of you, I know Hollis said that he couldn't make it, that's fine, but Mr. Tewolk, and Mr. Mezza, and Mr. Conley, and Seawall, and Joe, and Mr. Neighbors, y'all, welcome to come out. We are in need of roughly probably three, four people to judge the car show as well for us. So, we look forward to having you guys out that day and, you know, to come out with families and have fun, okay?
What time did you say on Saturday?
Um, Mr. 10 to 3.
10 to 3.
I'm Mr. June 30th.
And you needed judges for the car show?
For June 30th.
What time?
From 10 to 3, it is the thing, but we're probably, probably start judging probably around 1:00 for the cars. And then, then Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, the breakfast is on Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. I'm sorry. Okay?
Thank y'all very much for the invitation. We have been received.
All right, Hollis, thank you.
You did it under two minutes and 59 seconds.
We worked well under pressure.
Thank y'all. God bless y'all. Good night.
Uh, Melanie Salins, 95, Murray Street. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Mezza for his continued integrity to recuse himself from these votes due to his conflict of interest. But I would like to respectfully suggest on public record that EDA members Brownwell and Tom Patterson and Mark Baker may want to recuse themselves in future EDA votes regarding Valley Health due to their positions held on the Warren Memorial Hospital Board Foundation. We should want to avoid any possible perception of conflict of interest, especially when the IDA bond paperwork specifically states no board member should be on the employee of the county or town or have any potential financial gain in place of vote. Just my suggestion to keep things on the up and up. Tonight, I come to you conflicted. I understand the benefits of approving this bond that can bring to this community, but I also understand the many detriments that this new hospital will bring our community in having no birth unit, no ICU, and being separated from LYN care. I feel this would be a prime opportunity for local government to negotiate some solutions with Valley Health. For months now, we've heard stats and studies citing dangers to mothers and babies, and exactly as we warned, within the first three weeks of the birth unit closing, we received three reports of preterm labor presenting in the ER who had issues with transport. One patient reporting to us a five-hour wait to get to Winchester. Another patient reporting that the ER doctor told her he didn't even have access to adequate equipment as it had already all been removed from the hospital. We met with Valley Health to address these issues, and their response was to essentially say these patients were all giving inaccurate information, stating that the one woman only had to wait three hours and 45 minutes, and then all of these women and babies ended up being okay. I say they got lucky. Three mishaps in three weeks would translate into 52 women and babies every year being put into harm's way. How long will it be before the luck runs out and a life is lost? In this meeting, Valley Health refused to provide adequate solutions to the transport issue. For that matter, they refused to even recognize that there was a transport issue. They suggested to us that we reach out to the churches for help with the transport, that we seek community volunteers to drive laboring women to the hospital, or that laboring women should take taxi cabs. When we pointed out the liability issues for the cab companies to transport a patient in a medical emergency, Mr. Merrill said, "That sounds like discrimination," yet he fails to see the hypocrisy in that comment. We have spoken a lot about the birth unit closing, but we should also pay close attention to the loss of intensive care and the separation of the hospital from LYN care and the further burden that this will place on transport. Valley Health has said the demographics dictate the focus should be on the seniors, but these decisions endanger the seniors. The truth is, they are focusing on the most profitable parts of health care in this new hospital, the CAF Lab, which is a $12 billion a year Medicare cash cow. As a tax-exempt entity, this is not acceptable. We need you, as our representatives, to direct Valley Health's focus back to our community's needs and concerns. We need you to set up meetings with Valley Health and find resolutions to these problems, and if Valley Health is not willing to do so, then we need you to reach out to other health systems who would love to take over care in our area. I've presented a petition with over 821 signatures asking you to stop Valley Health from doing this. We were told at all zoning hearings that the council wanted to be able to vote no, but were bound by state laws because it was a zoning issue. This is your chance. You can vote this down. You can delay this vote pending a sit-down meeting with Valley Health to ask them to find solutions for all of these problems I mentioned. You can send Valley Health a message that their focus needs to be on the safety of the community and not what makes them the most profits. Thank you.
Hi again. My name is Amy Cavan Kearns. I live at 137 Wall State Road Lane, Stevens City, Virginia, 226 by 5. Last time I addressed the council, I touched on how barriers to health cause lifelong stress. I see no problem in reiterating, stress in pregnancy and in utero doesn't stop there but continues to affect the developing brain and can cause lasting negative effects. Researchers have shown that disparities in health care are disparities in health. This affects our community as a whole, and these disparities are costly. Does town have money to combat or precautions of these barriers to care? Merrill can list off what Valley Health has done for the town in the past. All those things are lovely, but Sarahs, this has nothing to do with negative effects we're already seeing. Three patients in one month. Valley Health claims this bond will benefit the community. We have pointed out why it won't. Why should we do them any more favors when they refuse to listen to any of our concerns, even mocking them? Why put our town in the hands of a company that is not willing to discuss ways to improve and combat issues? How do we trust them when their first move is to shift blame, bully their staff, and call their patients liars seriously? Asking us what we intend to do about fixing this problem that they have caused. If Valley Health expects this community's trust and respect, they should be willing to work with the town, be transparent, open to criticism, and take responsibility. I'm sure you would all agree that respect and trust are arms. I have yet to see a reason to give them mine. Thank you for my time.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Amber Poe Morris. I'm 3574 Housville Road, Front Royal, Virginia. I am concerned with the recommendation of the approval of the issuance of the revenue bonds for financing the new, and I cannot say approved, Warren Memorial Hospital. The hospital has needed an upgrade for some years now. As a constituent who was born in Warren Memorial Hospital and raised in Warren County as a lifelong resident, who went on to not only birth one, not two, but three young upcoming constituents of Warren County at Valley Health Warren Memorial Hospital, I feel as if our voices of the county have not been heard, or maybe they just haven't been appropriately addressed, and now is the time to put this on hold and make these concerns addressed. When I delivered my first one in 2011 at Warren Memorial Hospital by an emergency cesarean after 36 hours in labor, I was interviewed by a DC news station who came to Warren Memorial Hospital, and they came in my room and they said, "Would you be interested in letting us interview you because Warren Memorial Hospital has the highest paternity rate of any hospital, not only in the northern Shenandoah Valley but in eastern Virginia?" And I don't know about you guys, and there can be a lot said about Front Royal, but one value holds true to this town: We are family-oriented. Warren County in its own has shown steady economic growth and housing development with the projected continual growth. All bridges and roadways in and out of Warren County have been repaired, restored, or renewed to accommodate the ever-growing traffic here. New and existing plots of land within the town and county have already announced their upcoming development here, such as 320 homes on Mary Shady's Lane have been announced, over 164 acres residentially zoned. The amount of births expected needed per year could increase if only a quarter of the number of those houses were to birth two children per household, which is below the average. Page County has already cut labor and delivery, and we see their patients here regularly. Now they're forced to travel even further as well. I travel over four hours for my daughter's pediatric nephrology care, not because I want to, but because I have to. No one in this area will stand up and open what we need here. There's a huge market for pediatric and neonatal care. Why isn't Valley Health interested in that kind of revenue, being that they are money-hungry? The kind of positive marketing it would bring an influence and an influx into this county to have those cared. People would travel here from anywhere inside of Virginia for that, and that makes a difference in the youth and the future of the Commonwealth of Virginia. With continual commercial and residential growth, we can't expect to exceed those birth rates in only one year of their study. Let us look at the risks it's already imposed on Warren Memorial's emergency room, who is now at risk of delivering children in an unsafe environment, exposing children to the most dangerous illnesses and diseases in our community. I seriously hope everyone who votes on us tonight will take into consideration. The building of the Rainy Hospital that cuts care cuts the numbers of beds it can house patients, cuts into detrimental services needed for a growing community, it cuts into local jobs, and it cuts into the health and wellbeing of our community. Just think about your children, the deliveries of your nieces, your nephews, and your families. All I ask of you tonight.
That's Steven Schlesinger, 8 West Claus, Rex Street, Number 2, Front Royal, Virginia, 2262. So, you know, I get it. I mean, Valley Health is obviously going to get the hospital. I get that, but, you know, I just wish you guys would see the, or Valley Health would see the bigger picture of what this town is about. You know, we're about family. You know, we're also about, you know, bringing other families here to have their family here. You know, it's kind of like a chain, a long chain of, I don't know how to describe it, but a food chain, I guess. So, you know, we're just trying to get more families here. We're trying to get more business here, and if you guys don't see the big picture on how much money, you know, you guys make, I mean, what happens after all the seniors die? No offense, guys. Once all these, when all these people go away, who you guys have to work with, you guys got nothing. You guys got nothing, okay? And when I say nothing, I mean, the seniors, they only live so long. I mean, I, no offense, guys, once again, I'm sure these guys only have like 20 years left, and if you guys are Valley Health, I'm sure you're looking at the big picture as well. So, I mean, I think you guys should, you know, bring the, back the Labor and Delivery Department. It's hard nights, it's hard deal. We've done things for you guys. You guys should do something for us. By the way, I got built by Valley Health just a little bit last night. I'm a lone shark that are ice sharks.
Good evening, Town Council. Thank you for being here this evening. My name is Jennifer Roberts. Settle on 47 Royal Lane, Apartment 8, Front Royal. Actually, I have four suggestions for the town. I know, I do have an opinion about the hospital, and I agree with everything that's stated. Absolutely. But I'm not going to address that and give my views about that right now. I have four suggestions. A neighbor approached me that as you drive up the hill towards the hospital, the current hospital, that a light is needed at that intersection because a lot of folks are wearing all-black clothes. It's very dark, and he almost hit a guy there. And he said it's happened a lot. He drives that route to work every day. Well, it's at night, obviously. So, a light is needed, again, at the intersection at the top of the hill and Shenandoah Avenue, very close to the hospital. Second, this town lacks pools. It lacks structured activities for the children. There is one pool in town, as you know, at the end of Commerce, the far side of town, that I just learned recently, it's only open 12 to 4 every day, not even if it's open Sundays. Where I live, on the south side of town, there is no town pool for the children. Personally, I love to swim. Adults, for everybody. And I'm proposing a town at that end of, excuse me, an above-ground pool at that end of the town. It could have a retractable roof, so you could also make it an enclosed pool as well. And did I say above-ground? I'm stumbling on my words. An in-ground pool with a retractable roof. Excuse me. So, there needs to be another pool in town. Second, I'm proposing an ice rink. I loved to ice skate as a young girl. That's what I learned in the Fairfax City Ice Arena. The closest ice arena to here is in Fairfax County. That's just absurd. There needs to be an ice rink, whether it's here in this town or just somewhere close to this town. Then again, the children can learn to ice skate, they can learn how to play hockey. My father played hockey. It's a very popular sport. The Cats just won, okay? So, we see how popular it is in the area, and again, I'm proposing an ice rink in the area. My fourth suggestion, it came from a man that I thought is an excellent suggestion. He had the idea of turning an old building, not in this town, but in another area, into not just a homeless shelter, but also a restaurant in the, in the building that the homeless folks could work in, learn how to cook food, serve food, be a hostess, all the jobs in a restaurant, and as they would live in that building, work in the restaurant, and pay, you know, a low rent to live there as well. If they had children, you could also have one floor of the building, a daycare for toddlers and young children before they go to school, and after school have them obviously go back there in daycare in the evening hours as well. So, I thought that was an excellent idea. He proposed that. He's from Flint Hill. He proposed that. I'm not sure if in Flint Hill or in that area. It was turned down, and then, you know, just never went there, and I thought that's something that townies consider. I don't know if there's a building of that size. I don't know where in the town, but maybe it could be found, or in the future, something becomes vacant that could be turned into a hotel and restaurant in order for the homeless to live there. And he proposed up to one year. They would live there and work, and then at the one-year point, they would need to move on, but again, they would learn some skills, some job skills, as they're living in the building.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Who was our last speaker, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All right, going to the report. Report, Special Commissioner Town Manager Joe Walsh, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have a report tonight. I'd like to call the chief up. He wants to do some officer recognition.
Officer, yes, please, sir.
Appreciate a few moments this evening, gentlemen, to be introducing our newest officer to the Front Royal Police Department this evening. Officer Travis Lehman. Officer Lehman grew up in Manassas, graduated from Osborne High School, went on to Radford University, graduated from there. He's not new to the Front Royal Police Department's family. He was a dispatcher with us from 2014 through 2016, and left, and then came back to us last year. Was hired in December. Began the academy at Skyline Regional Criminal Justice Academy in January, and graduated May 23rd, most recently, and he, while he was there, he earned the Top Academic Award as well as the Ricky L. Timbrough Performance Award. And that's kind of a big deal. That's, that's, that's an award that is given for character and drive, and it's chosen actually by his classmates and some of the individuals. So, academy staff actually has nothing to do with that. So, Officer Lehman has represented the town of Front Royal and the Front Royal Police Department exceedingly well thus far in doing that. He's joined by his beautiful girlfriend, Ms. Alarid, and she's going to do the honors
Thank you, Chief. All right, let's move on to the report. The county administrator, Doug Stanley.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, good evening. One thing I do want to note, and Dwayne can fill you in a little bit, but we are having some technical difficulties with our audio. One of our sound boards had to be sent out for repair. I'll keep touch with Joe on whether we can repair it or find a piece of equipment. I do want, since the county does maintain the pool, run the pool in this community, I do want to address the hours of operation that were stated. They're not exactly correct. I want to make sure the public has the current correct hours. The pool is open to the public from noon till 5:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. From 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., we have swimming lessons. The pool's tied up with the lessons in the morning. And then, on Saturday and Sunday, it's open from noon to 6:00 p.m. In the evening, from 7:30 to 9:30, we rent that out for private parties and other events. So, the pool basically is in operation from 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. most days. So, just wanted to correct that information. On my written report, June 1st to 3rd, the most as you are aware, the county experienced a sizable amount of rain over that weekend, town as well. The county received, we had a report of about seven inches at our gauge out at the airport. I know Chief Mayby lives up on the mountain. He had over 10 inches at his house between Friday and Sunday, and up in Skyline Estates had reports of over 15 inches of rain. So, basically, one-third of your annual rainfall averaged a bit in the course of about three days. With the ground already saturated, much of the heavy rain runoff into already full creek streams and low-lying areas, and during this rainstorm on Sunday morning, we have rapid flash flooding causing roads to flood, cutting off traffic routes along Happy Creek Road, John Marshall Highway, Oregon Hollow Road, and Linden and Housville Road. We experienced three vehicles in floodwaters with rescues by passersby that happened to stop and help folks out. Our fire rescue, Boat 6 and 3 rescued a citizen on Housville Road, and Boat 6 also made a water rescue. And boat six also made a water rescue in Clark County off of Palisade Road. Boat thirteen, uh, fourteen and three rescued and removed 11 trailer occupants at the North Fork Campground. These were people who decided to stay to ride out the storm in their trailers until the river flooded, trapping them in their trailers. And then they had to be rescued by the fire rescue boats. On June 4th, Monday, Fire Rescue sent a boat to search for and recover a dog that had drowned in the owner's car. Overall, Fire Rescue recorded 12 to 14 boat rescues over the course of that weekend. We also had a couple of river rescue calls in Frederick County. Station six, the old Shenandoah Farm Station, was trapped from both sides, but the only way being in and out over Blue Mountain to Linden. Chief held a shift over so they could staff both an engine and an ambulance, uh, if needed, and provide a boat operator. We did the same thing here with Company One for the issues we had in town. Uh, all in all, I think everybody did their job correctly and, uh, without too much serious incident. Our county fall cleanup day has been scheduled for Saturday, October 27th. That's the day that we take those large items. And we'll have, um, crews set up down in Linden. The people will bring, you know, furniture, white goods, things like that they want to drop off. We'll also have, uh, equipment set up at Shenandoah Farms and down the lane, a transfer station down in Bentonville. Development Review Committee met May 23rd, uh, of 2018. Committee discussed projects in the county, including proposed contractor storage yard of the owner's court on the Fairground Road. This road over behind the jail. Proposed alterations to the Starbucks or the Common Shopping Center. They noted that Michael's open on May 23rd. We had a request for our R and B sales business. County, uh, committee also discussed town projects, including proposed brewery on Water Street, the old Blockard Building. Uh, the applicant presented his plan, and the committee offered comments and feedback on the proposal. A proposed shoe store we open on Main Street next to Town Hall. Update on inspections of the Front Royal Brewery and park and possible uses for the busy V store on Jackson Street. That committee will meet again on June 27th. Reassessment, um, we're about 65% complete with reassessment. And, uh, as of this week, Wingate Appraisal has actually moved into town limits to start working the town. To this point in time, they've been working in the subdivision of rural parts of the county. This will allow them to build a little bit faster, uh, because the homes are in closer proximity. Lots are smaller. Current plans, we have initial property visits completed by the end of September. The next step would be, uh, to visit as necessary all properties where building permits have occurred since the reassessment started, since July 1. If someone has pulled a permit, they put a deck or finished a basement in places they've already been since they started work last year, they'll go back and pick those up. The amount of time for this phase will depend on the volume of permits. They expect this to occur during October. Also, during October, they'll be running edits and data reports to ensure the values are as good and error-free as they can be in prior mailing notices of assessment changes. Notices should be mailed around the end of October. Will show the hearing location, dates and times of hearings, the proposed assessment, previous assessments, the percentage of change, as well as what the county tax rates are. Administrative hearings also notice the assessors' hearings should begin at or near the 1st of November. They expect the hearings and reviews to take most of the month of November with about two weeks of advertised hearing dates. Owners will typically be notified of the result of the, uh, their appeal during December, which is when the reassessment book is run and delivered to the clerk of court, Commissioner of Revenue, which has to be turned over before the end of December, on December 31st. So, if you have any questions about the reassessment process, people make phone calls, feel free to either send them to the Commissioner of Revenue or I can answer those questions as well. Uh, you may have noticed a couple of weeks ago, the county had run eight or nine pages of delinquent tax, real estate tax accounts in, uh, the Royal Virginia Daily and Warren Sentinel. Also note that tax, one of the counties outside tax sale consultants will be holding a sale of delinquent tax properties in late July. Once we have all the information, we'll post it on the county's website and Facebook page so that those who may be interested in purchasing one of those properties will be able to come to the meeting. A few project updates. Uh, Tressie Jeffrey's Land Construction has completed the project punch list. We hope to be able to wrap up the project, file our final invoices this month. The county staff has substantially completed site work, installation of phases one and two of the playground equipment. Um, I do want to say what an excellent job the town is doing on Cryzer Road between the curb and gutter work, the trail work you've completed, and the new bridge that's going to go in. And I know you all eventually have plans to later pay that section of road later. It's given transforming that whole corridor, um, and really giving it a fresh new look. So, we appreciate that. Remember, our power station is moving forward. We hope to be able to, uh, have that project out to bid by late summer of this year and, uh, be able to award a bid later this fall. Health and Human Services Complex is, uh, the board has approved a contract to Juniper Construction. They're inside doing renovations to move the registrar's office, uh, from this building and also the Brighter Futures Alternative School, which has probably been housed in the professional community services board. We hope to have the school program moved by September 1. And the registrar substantially complete by November 1st. But that will have, still have to move after, uh, election, per election law requirements. B-Dot Marlowe Stock Revenue Sharing Project, uh, note on your agenda tonight, you have an easement for your water line. That project is, is substantially complete from the standpoint of all site work. They'll be doing milling, paving, and striping in one of the next couple of nights as soon as the weather clears to be able to complete that project. Morgan Ford Bridge, we were supposed to have a, uh, bridge ribbon cutting today. That was put off with, uh, the flooding out of the site, a little bit of damage. But road was back open as of last Thursday night. And, uh, the, uh, the good news is, you know, the bridge was under water for a few days in the past that would have been under water for the last month. The bridge will still flood. Even the Indian Hollow Bridge, which is 27 feet high, which was well above the flooding on the South Fork in Bentonville, was flooded out because the approach water on the other side had five-foot water over the top of it. Just going to have to figure this out. That's something you have to learn to deal with. Thanks to you that we're able to come to our public hearing on May 22nd, Warren County Middle School for the new Happy Creek Road improvements. I call that Phase Four. That's the town limit piece out under I-66 in Manassas River Road. B-Dot hopes to be able to move up the advertisements date on that project to January 2021. Today, um, the 11th through the 17th, county flags will be at half-mast in honor of our namesake, General, or Doctor General Joseph Warren. Um, he was born on June 11th, 1741. He was killed in the Battle of Bunker Hill on June 17th, 1775. So, the flags will be at half-mast the day he mourned, the day he died this week. And lastly, I just wanted to announce, we, uh, put out a press release today, but our, uh, the National Association of Counties has recognized Warren County's Community Liaison Program with the 2018 Annual Achievement Award in category of Human Services. The award to honor innovative, effective county government program with strength in services for residents. The Community Liaison Position was developed in the collaborative efforts of the Youth Advisory Board, which Chief Magellus sits on. Purpose of the Community Liaison Position is to assist Warren County residents with locating resources to help issues they may be facing when they may be uncertain or unaware of where to turn. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I know you refer people to Michelle as well. Michelle Smelsor, our liaison, and, uh, that's what she's there for, is to help the folks out and need a helping hand. So, with that, we happen to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I guess you get off lucky tonight, though. Anyone have any questions? All right, moving on, request of inquiries, council members. Hearing none, report of the mayor, there being none. Proposals for addition or deletion items to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add item 7D to the consent agenda, a proclamation for the Mid-Atlantic Women's Motorcycle Rally.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor, add a proclamation for the Mid-Atlantic Women's Motorcycle Rally. This does require a unanimous vote. Ms. Barry.
Do we have a second, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, not a second. Jeanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Mesa.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for any other additions or additions? Hearing none, consent agenda items. This is going to require a roll call vote. Council approval for proclamation honoring the Front Royal Alex Lodge and celebrating 150 years of service to the Department of Protective Order of Alex. Council approval for proclamation of the National Flag Day. Deed of easement for Corbett Run North LLC and Marlowe and Solid Investment LLC to the Town Water Sewer Easements for the Rainways Acquisition for the Royal Farms. And D, the new add, proclamation for the Mid-Atlantic Women's Motorcycle Rally. Mr. Mayor, moving on to the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Barry.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Mesa.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
All right, moving on, number eight, council approval, ordinance to amend Town Code Section 158-6 adoption by reference of the State Motor Vehicle Laws. This is the second reading, Ms. Barry.
Council's requested to adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend and reenact Town Code Section 158-6 pertaining to adoption by reference of the State Motor Vehicle Laws as presented.
Gentlemen, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I prepare, I move that council adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend and reenact Front Royal Town Code Section 158-6 pertaining to the adoption of reference by the State Motor Vehicle Laws as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm sure most everybody is aware that the General Assembly each year passes new regulations. And all we're doing tonight is reapproving them so that our enforcement staff can enforce these new laws that's been approved by the State General Assembly for the next year.
All right, Ms. Barry.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Mesa.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number nine, council approval, resolution authorized IDA issuance of revenue bonds for the financing of the new Warren Memorial Hospital. Ms. Barry.
Warren Memorial Hospital has requested that the IDA of the town and the county recommend approval of the issuance of the IDA revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $60 million to assist in A, paying a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new three-story, $175,000 square foot general acute care hospital initially licensed for 36 beds. B, funding a portion of the interest occurring on the bonds during the construction and for a period not exceeding one year after completion. And C, paying certain costs and expenses in connection with the authorization, issuance and sale for the bonds as presented.
Gentlemen, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a resolution that recommends approval of the issuance of bonds from the Industrial Development Authority, IDA. A front row in the county of warrant to assist in financing a new Warren Memorial Hospital as presented.
Got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, because of my employment at Valley Health, I would like to make a statement of disclosure that I had our attorney, uh, Doug Maybeer, draft up for me. Um, I'm not going to read through the whole disclosure. I'll give it to our clerk if anybody would like to read through it, as it has sections of the code that I'll be referencing. Uh, but I will read a couple of the bullets. I am employed, I am not employed in Front Royal, I have Warren Memorial Hospital. However, I am employed in Winchester by the parent organization, Valley Health System. Um, I have consulted with the town attorney for the town, Front Royal. He advised me that according to the Virginia State Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, this bond is an issue. This bond issue is a transaction which I, as a member of Town Council, may participate because I am a member of a business, profession, occupation, or group of three or more persons, the members of which are affected by the transaction, so long as I comply with the disclosure requirements of subsection H of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3115. My personal interest is that I am a member of a group of three or more persons which are affected by this transaction. I affirmatively state that it is not outstanding in my personal interests and the effect, and the effect it might have on the aforementioned group. I am able to participate in this transaction fairly, objectively, in the public interest, but I noted to affirm this bond issued. I should make my declaration early to be recorded in the written minutes of the Town Council and filed signed written just, uh, declaration with the clerk of Town Council. And the statement of disclosure will be made to our clerk.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring some facts that, uh, probably the public's not aware of. As our town manager, or town lawyer stated, the county and town will not be responsible for any of the 501(c)(3) Valley Health loans or bonds. I also quote here item three of the resolution. The issuance of bonds as requested by the borrower will not constitute a debt of prejudice of faith and credit to the Commonwealth of Virginia, the town or county, and neither to faith and credit nor the taxing power of the Commonwealth of Virginia or any political subdivision thereof, including the town and county, will be pledged to the payment. There are a couple of other facts that you're probably not aware of. And this is, as a former member of the EDA and IDA for this county for many years, Valley Health could go to any municipality to request bonds, not just Warren County, not just the town of Front Royal. The other thing that is very, um, pertinent is any fees that they pay for these bonds stay in this community, not state community. It's our community. I'd rather not see it go to Winchester, Frederick County, Shenandoah County if it's we benefit from any fees that they pay. It goes into the community. We also have issued many bonds over the years. The prevailing one is the Warren County School System. That's how we've got new schools in this community. Let's not forget that. RMA has made several requests for bonds through this community. Uh, PENTAP, Christuson College, Parity Hall has requested bonds. And we have assisted them. So, I bring those facts out into the community so you're aware of these. And I know there's been some rumor control running around that we are now responsible. We are not. Your resolution clearly states that. I'd like for you to understand that as a community. So, that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Seelaw. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I was on record twice before this council when the zoning issue came up, saying I wish I could have voted no at that point. The law compelled me to vote yes based on the facts that were before me. Uh, there is no such restriction on me tonight. I am not going to give my endorsement to a downgrade of hospital services, so I'm going to vote no.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I didn't realize that our vote tonight was related to, um, the approval of, uh, the approval of a business model that was asking for, uh, validation of the legitimacy of the bond issuance. So, uh, just to clarify, uh, we are being asked to validate whether or not this is legitimate to ask for the bond between the EDA and Valley Health System. We're not voting on Valley Health's, uh, business operations. We're not voting on the zoning, um, just rather, uh, rather voting on whether or not this is a legitimate reason for the issuing of the bonds, which, to my knowledge, I don't remember the last time we declined a bond issuance that way. So, um, I don't, I don't quite understand Councilman Conley's reasoning for not voting yes to this.
Anyone else? Ms. Barry, roll call, please.
Councilman Conley.
No.
Councilman Mesa.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to council approval, fiscal year 19 budget amendment to create a separate departmental budget for the community development. Ms. Barry.
Council's requested to approve an FY-19 budget amendment to create a separate departmental budget for community development in the amount of $41,500 to be used to retain a graphic artist, create a newsletter to send to businesses, create additional brochures so it would be general, or excuse me, geared toward businesses and other expenses associated with community development.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve fiscal year 19 budget amendment in the amount of $41,500 to create a separate departmental budget for the community development to use to retain a graphic artist, create a newsletter to send to businesses, create additional brochures that would be geared toward businesses, and other expenses associated with community development.
Motion second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Ms. Barry.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Mesa.
Yes.
Councilman Seelaw.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Tewol.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least, number